Started, I'd like to turn the floor over to Senior Planner Lori Anderson to make an interjection.
Thank you, Turner. I wanted to introduce the Planning Commission to feel like who is our administrative assistant and who, from this point forward, will be attending the Planning Commission meetings. So she'll be operating the equipment, which I saw in this recording at the last meeting. She'll be helping with the three-minute clock and introducing the speakers, and she'll also be doing preparing minutes. So, anyway, Tila.
Welcome.
Welcome, Tila.
All right. First item on the agenda is citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to render comment, please step forward to the podium up here. State your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes.
No one has signed up.
Okay. Tell you what, do you have copies of these? Great. Do you want to describe these in your comment?
If you wanted to say that the first person signed up to speak is Kristy Allen.
So, the first person who signed up to speak is Kristy Allen, yeah. Go ahead, just to the podium.
Yeah, I'm going to repeat what I just said, I think, before you guys came in. If you want to render comment, please step up to this podium, state your name, state your address, please limit your comments to three minutes.
Okay. My name is Kristy Allen. I live at 1-852-671st Avenue Northeast in Kenmore, and I am a tree lover. We have lots of trees. I have Japanese maples, different types of trees in my yard, right across the street at 1-8507, 71st Avenue Northeast. They demolished a two-story house to build six townhomes. They took down about six trees, between five and six Douglas fir trees. They left two single trees standing by the driveway. At the last windstorm two weeks ago, many trees went down in Kenmore, and I'm really concerned. These trees are going to go down on my house in the next storm. They're exposed, the roots are exposed, they're right next to the sidewalk. I'm really fearful, and who's going to replace my house or my family? And so that's my comment. I really think these last two trees need to be cut down immediately. Even the contractor, I spoke to him, he said, "The roots are probably already damaged. When we move the foundation up to the roots, they're probably going to get damaged. They should come down now, or they're going to go on your house." That is what he told me. His name is Seth. So I'm just urging you to allow the last two trees remaining to come down. Children walk on the sidewalks, elementary school kids, when the wind picks up, they're going to go down. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristy. Anybody else? Come on up.
Yeah, as she's pretty much explained, you can understand what's going on, but the two trees-
Sorry, sir, could you say your name and your address real quick?
John Allen.
And your address.
1-852-671st Avenue Northeast in Kenmore.
Thanks, John.
Yeah. So, the trees, the street was redirected when the original condominiums across the street were put in, the North Shore Townhomes, and the sidewalks in those trees, where they, when the road was pushed over, there was a number of them already taken down. When they put in the sidewalk, they graded all around, right up next to those trees, and disturbed the roots on that side of the tree, on the roadside. Then, now, they've gone over, and on the backside, they've taken a tree out on the backside of one of them, and in order to get the foundation in for the new building, they have to grind and go in and work around the roots that are already existing. Take out the one tree, and then be right up against it, because the other one's within four or five feet of it. But there's, the way it is, is those trees are going to be standing completely alone, and with the wind coming straight up the lake, we've already had probably at least two, three branches come across and actually go through and into our roof, and one in the middle of the night threw a skylight off of those trees. So, as you can see and understand, they are a danger.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, my name's Bev Thorson. I live at 1-881-971st Avenue Northeast, and I actually live right down the street from them, and even though it's not, their issues don't affect mine, I felt the need to step up and wrote a letter. I used to live in Shoreline, and I had a lot of trees go down. There were a lot of myths and a lot of emotions around trees, but I got to tell you, I hired an arborist to get the facts, and what he told me was that, whether they're hemlocks or firs or whatever, some of these trees are just too big to be that close to residential areas, and that the roots tend to go horizontal and not down, because they can find the water easier. And when you disrupt some of the root lines, it makes the other trees vulnerable of falling over. And he showed me pictures of even new homes that had gone in, where they just carved out a piece of property, carved out some of the trees to make the backdrop of trees look nice, but then after the house got built, all the trees caved in on top of them. So he said, "Even a healthy tree, you should just take them down if they're dangerous. There's plenty of nice trees that you can have for shade and for the greenery, but not these dangerous, big firs and big hemlocks, cottonwoods, the kinds of things I showed you there." And I've had experience trying to talk to neighbors and say, "Look, you can see that one leading, it's going to go down." And when money's involved and the emotion around trees, they tend to just go deaf. Sure enough, it went down, but I'd bet money on that, that that one is for sure going to take out some, and fall on their property, and it is just dangerous. They've made it worse by taking out so many part of the trees, compromising the root system. So those trees are vulnerable to coming down, and I'm really concerned for safety for the community, so there you go.
Thanks, Bev. So I got these pictures. Did you have others you could give to the staff, and they could add it to your letter?
I could electronically send them to you.
Why don't you do this? Why don't you give this to Lori Anderson over there?
Okay.
And she can add it to your letter, and it'll be part of your package.
Okay, thank you.
You bet. In fact, I'll hand it down the row. There's three pictures. All right, anybody else? Please.
Hi, my name is Ann Anderson, 1-6304-81st Place Northeast. And Friday, I started a discussion, I mean, a public service project, and started a discussion in my neighborhood about tree density. First, I want to say thank you to Lori Anderson, Rob Kerlency, and Andrew Bauer for their input, and thank you to the mayor for liking trees. I was walking around my neighborhood, and the neighbor said, "Oh," he doesn't want, this neighbor doesn't want to talk to, "But, look, go to this house, the mayor lives here, and he likes trees." So neighbors said comments like population density, I haven't had a chance to talk to the mayor yet, but, and whole ecosystem, and so the neighbors also said that the city of Kenmore was founded by builders, and that there's like, "Oh, look at that row of houses on a landslide area." And they'll be like, "Oh, look, this three-acre lot just got clear-cut, and I didn't get a public notice in the mail." Today, I'd like to ask the public and the Planning Commission to keep the builders and the city accountable. Like, we have great regulations, but they're not being enforced, and that's why you see trees blowing in the wind. And builders often have no tree plan. I found this out, like, often they're given the green light to build, they're approved before there's a tree plan. And I could give you an example after example how, you know, there's a lack of distribution of public notices to the community, or how, like, I've gotten one in three years, and on my walk today, I saw 10 public notices, you know, posted there of, you know, they're going to clear more land. And today, I saw the new houses that are selling are by ravines, or by, with neighbors with awesome trees, or maybe it's a new development with also awesome trees. Those are the houses that are selling. And then today, I also saw ghost block with no, a new development, it was a totally ghost, empty houses, new development, empty houses that had no trees. They're not selling probably because there's no tree plan, and there's, the tree density requirement is not being enforced or implemented. And so it's spooky, it was very spooky to me today to see empty and no trees, where there was once a majestic old-growth forest. And I, you know, I had no idea, it was right around the corner from my house, so builders clear-cut beautiful old-growth trees, and they're not giving back us the same replacement trees, and no one is buying them. So please tell the builders what you want, happy customers or return customers. And I was told that the builder is actually not responsible for meeting the tree density zoning once the houses are sold. So, is this correct? Like, where does the builder's responsibilities for density end? I know I wouldn't be happy buying a new fancy house with dying trees or shrubs instead of trees.
Yeah?
Yes.
Could I have you wrap up?
Okay, yeah, I will wrap up, okay. So I have a lot of good points about the value of trees, but I feel like that if I just save one tree today, it's going to improve my life, my kid's life. I've worked really hard to be here in Kenmore, and it's going to, it's going to improve my community's quality of life if we preserve trees and enforce our tree density and tree plan zoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. All right. Anybody else? Okay. That satisfies the citizen comment portion of the agenda. The next item on the agenda is approval of the September 1 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve those minutes.
Thank you. Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries, the minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is tree windthrow amendments continued. I invite to the presentation's table, city staff consisting of our senior planner, Lori Anderson, and Ashley, help me out, Ashley, McCully, graduate intern. We have another guest.
We do have another guest. This is Samantha Loyac. She's from the Development Services Department, and at our last meeting, you had several questions about how development services processes worked. So she is here as a resource to answer any questions that could be directed to her. So as you know, at your last meeting, you held the public hearing on the, oops, on the tree windthrow amendments, and we had, I think there were five speakers. And so in your packet, we provided a response to comments, and Ashley is now going to give a presentation, sort of a refresher of the issue before you tonight.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'll provide a brief overview of why we have a tree ordinance in Kenmore. Tree management and protection ordinances are not just about protecting trees, they're designed to protect both trees and the properties containing both buildings and people of which the trees reside. Tree protection ordinances are a public safety tool. The city of Kenmore's tree management and protection ordinance was significantly revised in both 2004 and 2009. The principal goals of the ordinance are to reduce soil erosion and water pollution, to improve air quality, to reduce noise pollution, to create energy efficiency and water conservation, and provide wildlife habitat and ecosystems. Further, the foremost purpose of the tree management and protection ordinance, as outlined in the municipal code, is to establish a process and standards to increase livability and public safety of an area by helping to screen people and buildings from wind and inclement weather. At the July 21 Planning Commission hearing, the commission voted to move forward the proposed policy recommendations, amending Chapter 18.57 and 15.25 to a public hearing. There was a majority consensus that, from a policy perspective, the proposed amendments strengthen protections to reduce the risk of windthrow and increase public safety. There was also a majority consensus that the science for mitigating future risk of windthrow doesn't change whether the trees are on a commercial law or a single-family lot. And the proposed amendments to change the exceptions for non-development-related tree removal on single-family lots was voted to move forward as well. After the public hearing on September 1, and in addressing the questions and concerns raised by both citizens and the commissioners, it appears that the concerns are specifically addressing tree removal on single-family lots and the regulatory process. To recap, the current process for tree removal lot on single-family lots is that single-family homeowners are required to submit Form 303 to Development Services prior to tree removal. This form is not only a tool for tracking the city's tree inventory, it is also a tool for staff to determine if a permit and fee will be required for tree removal. There are exemptions such as clearing and removal of trees, or the construction of a structure authorized by a valid building permit, or removal of significant trees on lots that are not in a protected area based on the lot's square footage. For example, lots up to 20,000 square feet can remove up to four trees a year. Therefore, if an applicant's trees are significant trees in a protected class or critical area, or are trees over the annual allotted amount, any additional removal beyond that would require a permit application, review, and subsequent fee should the tree be granted permission for removal. The proposed amendments do not change this process for removal on single-family lots. Rather, it adds significant trees to a protected class of trees, and would require an evaluation before a permit is issued. The process is no different than removing trees in critical areas or other protected areas. As we had mentioned earlier, too, a new staff review matrix would be developed to be included with Form 303 to determine preliminarily whether a windthrow hazard might exist and should be analyzed through a permit process. A permit and arborist report would be required if and only if the single-family lot contained trees that could be at risk for windthrow. With respect to tree removal on single-family lots, we think it's also important to discuss, which we haven't really yet, why these trees would be, are being desired to be removed. If the removal is part of an ADA utility, new home, or new addition, 18.57 would be triggered, and windthrow evaluation would be mandatory per the proposed 18.57 amendments. If the tree is hazardous or dead, and poses an immediate threat or falling and causing significant damage, it may be, it's currently permitted to be removed under tree hazard law. There, you don't need a form, and you can just remove it. So it can be deduced, then, that the remaining desired purposes for tree removal would primarily be aesthetics, such as views or landscaping plans. Because balance has been a focal point of discussion surrounding tree removal, balance should depend on why the tree is desired to be removed, and consider the trade-offs. Views should not outweigh an increased risk to public safety. After reviewing all these concerns by both citizens and the Planning Commission, staff is not recommending any further changes to proposed amendments. We recommend that they move forward, and be recommended to the city council as initially approved by the Planning Commission on July 21. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else?
I might just add that tonight is not the last night that this topic will be in front of you, because you had asked to see the draft matrix that might be attached to the Form 303 if that moves ahead. So Ashley has been working on that, and we anticipate having an arborist review the draft of that. We didn't have enough time, it's only been a week, we only had a week. So we anticipate bringing that back on October 6 for you to review and maybe then finish up your discussion.
All right. Thank you. I'd like to start, because I missed the last meeting, by thanking the vice chair for chairing the last meeting.
You're welcome.
And thank you to Lori for recording it despite the fact that the video system, audio/video system was not working, because Tila wasn't here. Welcome, Tila. I was able to listen to most of the meeting to the extent Lori could record it, and it was audible, and I heard a lot of things that gratified me. I heard a lot of people, commissioners, mention concern for balance in this windthrow law, which I have advocated, and I appreciate people listening to that. And I appreciate that people wanted to give me a chance to respond to staff comments to my memo from August. So thanks again for that, to my colleagues. So I want to start by talking a little bit about public safety, which is the point of the windthrow law. I think staff agrees with that. And whether this proposal is effective, if so, how effective, or if there's something we might be able to do that's more effective and still have balance. And when I say balance, I'm talking about allowing people to use their property in reasonable ways. You know, all the people that are here, and they're people who testified, and they're facing some threat of tree damage, but they want to use their property in reasonable ways, too. So we're hoping we can strike a balance between the safety and the ability of people to use their property in reasonable ways. So with respect to public safety, one thing that I did mention in my memo was the hazard tree laws. Those are designed to try and keep these threatening trees from falling, and try and expedite this process. I think Ashley said, "You don't need to fill out a form to cut down a hazard tree. You don't need the city's permission," and that's a good thing. I think, though, when I was listening to the tape of the last meeting, I think one of the commissioners, it might have been Commissioner Mulcair, asked if the neighbor could enforce the hazard tree law. I'm hearing people who are saying, "Hey, I've got a tree on the property next to mine, and it, I think it's going to come down, and it could hurt us, it could kill us, it could damage our property." And I think the answer was they could not. Could you elaborate on that, somebody on staff?
So if a neighbor is concerned about a property on an, or a tree on an adjoining property, could the city require that neighbor to take down the tree?
Could the neighbor, what would the steps would the neighbor take?
Well-
The person who's threatened by the tree.
Right. It would be a civil issue-
Yep.
-between the property owner and the neighbor, so they would have to discuss it and presumably come to some kind of resolution, and if not, I suppose they would be looking at some type of legal action.
They'd have to go to civil court.
I think so.
And because the city's not going to take a role in that?
No.
Could that neighbor come to the city and say, "Hey, there's a hazard tree next to my house, it's threatening. Can you please enforce this law?"
The neighbor could come to the city, but unless we had a request for removal from the adjoining property owner, the city would likely not get, I can't imagine that the city would get involved. We would probably recommend mediation services, which we've done in the past where there are civil issues.
Yeah, but it's not binding.
No, it's not.
Right. So the stubborn neighbor with the threatening tree could just say, "I don't care."
Correct.
And the neighbor who's threatened by the tree has no recourse unless they want to go to court.
Correct.
Nobody wants to go to court. I do it for a living, I can tell you, nobody wants to go to court, if you can avoid it. So my thought is, maybe one of the things we can explore here is expanding the hazard tree law to allow people to either get some right of enforcement here. Either create a private right of action so that the threatened neighbor can use the hazard tree law to compel the city to require that tree be removed, or directly compel that neighbor to remove the tree. Or if the threatened neighbor has an arborist certify that this is a hazardous tree, satisfies the hazard tree definition, they can go in and remove the tree. Can we talk about that, maybe? Because that would seem to me to relieve a lot of the concerns we're hearing from people.
I think that that would alleviate concerns, but I think it's way outside the scope of this windthrow discussion. That is a different issue having to do with city enforcement of hazard tree regulations on private property. I mean, that would be a different role, and it isn't necessarily related to windthrow at all.
Go ahead, I don't want to interrupt. Are you done?
Uh-huh.
Okay. Here's the concern, and I think this is what I'm hearing, it is related to windthrow, because that's the risk. If the wind hits that tree, and it hits it hard, that tree could fall, and the point of this law is to prevent that. So I don't see how it's not related.
Yeah, the point of the law is to deal with development sites, where an action is being requested from a property owner or a developer, who is going to do something with their trees that could adversely impact trees on adjoining properties. So it's the result of an action. It is not an assessment of trees in the city that may be susceptible to windthrow. It's tied to an actual request.
But I think because the tree is made vulnerable, whether it's by lack of maintenance or by cutting other trees near the one that threatens the neighbor, that we're still at risk of windthrow.
That may be, and the staff would recommend against it. The Planning Commission certainly can decide whether they want to move forward with something. We would recommend against that, since that's not a role that the city takes on.
Well, here's one of my, here's one, one thing I'm struggling with, because you're saying, you're proposing a windthrow law, but you're saying, "We don't get involved in private disputes between neighbors." But the windthrow law takes sides in a private dispute between neighbors. If somebody owns a densely wooded lot next to a not-so-densely or an occupied lot, and the person who wants to build on the densely wooded lot is cutting trees, and the neighbor who feels threatened by that, that's a dispute between neighbors. So on one hand, you're saying, "Oh, we got a windthrow law that requires keeping trees or some form of mitigation," and I want to talk about mitigation later, because it's, I'm not familiar with the alternatives are. So you've got a dispute between neighbors, and you're taking sides by saying, "You've got to keep the tree if an arborist says this tree could, is vulnerable to windthrow." But on the other hand, you're saying, "We don't get involved in neighbor disputes, and we can't give somebody a private cause of action or compel them to, or allow them to take down the hazard tree."
That's because the city has a role in reviewing the permit. There's been a permit action requested, a tree removal permit or a development permit. Those are things that the city reviews already, and so it is an expansion of the role. But it certainly is not deemed an expansion of the role into this private property dispute. I also want to point out that this is not a staff recommendation at this point. This is a Planning Commission recommendation, and so I think that the other commissioners also have a voice here in this discussion.
Absolutely. We're taking turns here, okay? I'm happy to let everybody else comment. Is that your point, that I'm, like, sucking the air out of the room?
Not exactly, but I feel like you and I are having a-
I'm going to share the mic, but I'm just trying to catch up a little here.
Right.
I want to talk about public safety first, and I'm happy to let everybody else comment. I apologize for going on here. But part of this is, I wrote this memo, the staff responded, I'd like to have a chance to respond to that. But I did want to bring up hazard trees first, and I'll leave the follow-up to my colleagues, although Mike wants to jump in. Go ahead.
Thanks. Ashley, I believe in your introduction, you said that the proposed language that we're continuing to look at excludes new development in additions to existing residences. Is that correct, or did I mishear you?
I think you misheard me. What do you mean, "It excludes"? I think we were talking about new developments, commercial developments, large and small plots, and then extending it to single-family.
Okay. So for the language, the proposed language that we're discussing, would it apply to- So for the language, the proposed language that we're discussing, would it apply to a property owner who wishes to either build a residence on property or build in addition to an existing residence? Would this wind throw language that we're discussing today cover that scenario?
Yes.
It would?
And I think Sam would agree.
Okay.
There, there was one point that we needed to clarify. For hazard trees, you can remove a hazard tree without a Form 303, let's call it, if it's an, if it's an imminent threat, if you know that the tree is going to come down and it has to immediately been, be taken down. If it appears to be a hazard tree but is not an imminent threat, then the Form 303 still has to be submitted and identified as a hazard tree.
Did I read correctly in, in the memorandum that there's an exclusion if the development is covered under a building permit or a plat development plan?
That's correct. That's in Title 15 and it's put there specifically because Title 18 covers it. So in other words, there's no need for the clearing or grading permit because it is being assessed through Title 18 with the site plan review or the plat.
So I'm trying to imagine a building scenario for a single residence property owner that wouldn't be covered either by a plat development plan or a building permit. And I'm having a hard time imagining one of those scenarios.
A single-family, we often see requests to remove trees on single-family lots where there's no building or development involved. They, there's, for whatever reason, and there are any number of reasons, they desire to have a tree, a significant tree, removed unrelated to building.
Right. I feel like maybe I've come full circle to my original question. The language what we're discussing tonight, the proposed language, it doesn't seem that it would include building, buildings, or building additions. Because in almost every scenario that I can imagine, those would be covered either by a building permit or a plat development plan.
Those are covered through Title 18, the zoning code, the plat development and the building permit, et cetera. There is an exception to clearing and grading for a single-family homeowners who can remove a certain number of trees per year. And that, I think, has been the topic of discussion for most of the last little bit about these rules. Because the, the wind throw analysis would be extended to a request from a single-family homeowner to remove a tree under the changes to Title 15.
So is there identical parallelism between Title 18 and Title 15?
Right. The way it, right. It would move the single-family homeowner if they, if there was a significant risk of wind throw, it would move the single-family homeowner into the realm of having to get a clearing and grading permit subject to the standards of Title 18.
Does the wind throw protections already exist in Title 18 for building permits today?
No, there is a phrase in Tree Protection Priorities that talks about trying to preserve trees that shield other trees and buildings from, from the adverse effects of wind. That is a phrase in the protection priorities. But there's nothing that specifically talks about doing a wind throw assessment or mitigation or in Title 15, for example, the requirement to notify neighbors as it's currently written. None of that presently exists.
And is that by design? Are we, are we putting a higher burden or standard of care on the aesthetic landscaping homeowner than we do against the building homeowner?
It's, the, the standards are the same. The standard is that if you are creating a risk of wind throw either to the tree on your property or to trees on neighboring properties, you need to have that assessed, determine whether it is significant, and then think about mitigation or alternatives. So it's the same standard. Now, you could, if you were thinking about a single-family homeowner, a single-family lot, you may want to look at the reason for why the tree is being proposed to be removed. If they want to remove the tree and it is going to, say the arborist report determines there is a significant potential for wind throw. Okay, so let's assume that, that the removal of this tree is going to create a significant threat of wind throw, either to trees on their property or on the neighborhood, neighboring property. So by removing the tree, you're increasing the chance that the tree, the other tree is going to come down. So if you start from that point, then the question is, why is the tree being removed? And are there alternatives or mitigations? So, for example, we want to remove this tree because we want to grade our lot and change our landscaping plan. Is removing that tree, when you know that you're increasing the threat from the other tree, does that, which one trumps? Where is the balance? Staff, I think, would say that the balance is that the tree should be retained. And if they want to change the grade for the yard, well, maybe you build a retaining wall around that tree so that the tree is protected, but you still can do most of this change to your yard that you want to do. Or say you want to remove the tree because it's in the way of new utilities that you maybe, you want to relocate your utilities or you want to pull gas to your house when currently you have oil. So you, you want to run a gas line and the gas company has said, ooh, boy, we really want to run this line right where this tree is. And so then the alternative is, well, rather than cutting the tree, could you do boring rather than trenching? That is another mitigation that we've talked about previously. Or if the removal of the tree is to preserve views, well, then the question is, are there alternatives that could still provide some view but not create this risk? And where is the balancing in terms of view versus public safety? So I, that's, I guess what we're trying to talk about is that's where the balancing occurs and that's why, why the tree has to come out. And really, is it always a case where the tree has to come out? I don't know.
But that's not in the statute or the ordinance that you propose, the balancing, and what's the reason for cutting down the tree? It just says, if an arborist says this tree creates a risk of wind throw, or cutting this tree does-
Mm-hmm.
You've got to fix it.
The ordinance does not say that the tree cannot be removed. It doesn't say that the tree has to, that you have to take a certain measure. It says identify mitigation measures and that's when the analysis would happen.
mitigation measures to minimize the risk of wind throw, correct?
Right.
Well, if you're really going to minimize the risk of wind throw, you've got to leave the tree. I mean, even if you bore under the roots, instead of cut the roots, the tree stays.
Or you trim the tree. For example, if your motivation was a view, maybe there's a branch that could come off that would not create the problem, that you could get sort of a win-win.
Maybe, but that, the statute says minimize, not compromise.
Well, I'm not sure the legal difference there. The idea was that you would minimize the risk of wind throw. And sometimes that might mean keeping the tree.
I think it would almost always mean keeping the tree because there's no better way to prevent the wind throw than blocking the wind.
Well, it's balancing, Doug. I guess if, if the person were saying, this tree in this location is such that if this tree comes down, it's going to kill somebody, then maybe you would be, and they were saying, it's overhanging my house, it, it's already dropping branches on my roof, it's already creating these problems, then it's a different balancing. Then you're balancing one public safety issue and another public safety issue. So I think the notion of balancing is there in the regulation.
Boy, I don't, I'll tell you, but I don't want to cut Mike off. Let Mike keep going.
I only, I had one, one more point for the moment, I suppose. I read in the memorandum tonight that there was an estimate of an arborist report of approximately $500. I think that was the first time I was seeing that. And as I read that, it felt very expensive, almost unduly burdensome on a homeowner. I had, I removed a nuisance tree from my property about five years ago. And I believe the removal of that tree cost less than that. And it was a big tree. And the thought of paying for an arborist report to find out whether or not I have a wind throw issue, not including the work, seems challenging for many homeowners. Because then on top of that, if they receive the permission to remove the tree, that's an additional expense. And if they're denied, that's non-refundable. So anyway, that, that seemed expensive to me and I was just wondering if there's a different way that that cost could be allocated.
Well, the, the way we, we structured the, the analysis was that when the report, the Form 303 first comes in, that's where the matrix would be applied. So hopefully we wouldn't be asking someone to do an arborist report unless there were factors already that indicated there might be a wind throw issue. So the, $500 may be what it costs, I don't know. I talked to one arborist, that was the only person that I could contact that got back to me. So it, again, it's, the idea is that if it's creating wind throw and if the neighboring tree is going to come down, if this tree is removed, where do we fall out? I, I guess we're concerned that the, the outcome is potentially serious enough that the cost and the review is worth it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying to put myself in the position of the homeowner that can't afford that evaluation. What recourse does that person have?
I think Deborah's next in line, but I want to just add because we're on the point. My bigger concern is what's the burden on the homeowner with the tree and not being able to use their property as they see fit? Which might be, gee, I want to expand, or gee, I want to build, or gee, that tree is breaking into roots or breaking into my sewer line and it's backing up my sewer and I can't afford this. Or gee, the tree keeps shedding leaves, thousands of leaves every year and I'm 75 years old and I can't rake them. And these leaves are clogging up the surface water drain in front of my house, which the city in its most recent newsletter, said, let's please keep those clear because it's rainy season and that's going to run water all over the city. Those are good reasons for removing a tree and that's, that's, I'm not so concerned about the 500, although that's a legitimate point. I'll get it to you, Deborah. But that could be thousands or hundreds of thousands of dollars if you can't use land you invested in and they say, you've got to keep the tree there. Go ahead, Deborah.
Okay, so I, I would like to make sure we are separating out the issue of hazard trees from the issue of wind throw because I feel like we continue to conflate those. So if you have a tree that is currently damaging your property, currently infiltrating your pipes, currently infiltrating utility lines, all of those things that you mentioned, those are hazards. And that would fall under the hazard tree. Or if a tree is, looks like it's going to fall or it is falling, all of those are hazards. Those would fall under the hazard tree regulation. The hazard tree regulation is permissive, it isn't compelling. And I think that was another issue that kept getting confused. It permits somebody to take down a hazard tree. It doesn't compel a neighbor that has something that looks bad to do it. There's no enforcement, you, you can't use that regulation to tell somebody to take something down. That isn't how those regulations work. Wind throw, as we've tried to, as staff have tried to explain, I think, is when somebody wants to, asking to take down one or more trees that are, again, only significant trees, and there's a definition of that, where that taking down, where that request to take down trees creates a risky situation. So these are healthy trees currently, not hazard trees. And they're requesting, for whatever reason, landscaping, development, et cetera, and those may be good reasons, to take down a tree that is not a hazard tree, but the taking of that would create risk, would create hazard. Okay, so, and that is also, from my understanding, a permissive regulation. We don't compel people to take down healthy trees. We may or may not allow them to take down the healthy tree and we may not allow it without mitigation if it creates a significant risk. So I, we have heard, you know, story after story come to us about unfortunate wind throw situations that have already been created. In other words, developments, single-family, more than single-family have taken down trees such that others are now at risk. And we've heard story after story about that. And so I, I, you know, yeah, I want to have balance and I want to have, minimize the burden to homeowners, but I guess I want to respect that, those stories that have come to us. So that's my pitch. Oh, and I think the other thing that we had asked staff to bring, not just the matrix, but the actual 303, the questions that would be asked of homeowners.
Right. And, and that, the 303 form, I think, was in the July packet, but we'll include it along with this new-
The new questions, yeah.
Right, the new questions.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Did I see hands up over here? No? Okay. So with respect to the hazard tree, first, I'm not sure the definition is that broad that if your roots are breaking into the sewer line, it's a hazard tree and you can cut it down. Is that right? What's the definition?
I don't have the definition, but on our form it says, a tree that is an imminent hazard to life and/or property.
So do you ever get a request, hey, this tree's breaking into my sewer line, I can't afford this, can I cut it down? It's a hazard tree.
I haven't received one like that. Typically, it's the life hazard.
Yeah. How would you rule if you got that request?
I would look at an arborist report. I would request an arborist report, have them look at it and see if there are alternatives before determining that.
I wonder if we can, and this is what I was getting at at the outset. We can look at the hazard tree definition and broaden it to include these kinds of things. If Deborah's right and the hazard tree does include these kinds of things, it gives a lot of relief to somebody. They don't have to go through this elaborate and expensive process and they could get some of the benefit of their reasonable use of their property without the city saying, no, you can't. So that's, kind of reinforces what I was getting at. But the other thing was, Deborah's concern is, well, wind throw creates risk and harm to the neighbor and that's why I was saying, let's expand the hazard tree law so the neighbor can enforce it too. Because that's, I think, a much more efficient way to relieve people of the risk than going through this elaborate wind throw process. And finally, when you're talking about, and we touched on this, Lori, the statute doesn't get into all the options and all the mitigation and that's one reason I'm, I'm kind of confused by it. When I see the word mitigation, I'm not sure what you're talking about. But if we're going to allow that, I think we have to put it in writing. I think the statute has to explain what these options are. I saw as one of the proposals most recently that if somebody's denied a tree removal permit because of wind throw, that they could appeal it to the city hearing examiner. Which kind of has costs and benefits. One is, well, first of all, the hearing examiner's not going to make an independent decision. He or she is going to look at the law, the wind throw statute, and decide, well, does this fit within significant wind throw hazard? And is this a minimization? So really, it has to be there in the law. It can't be just, oh, let's hope that the city will work something out with the homeowner so that they reach a mitigation that's a win-win. Because if you're leaving it up to your hearing examiner, he doesn't know all that. All he or she is going to do is look at the statute and enforce it.
With the arborist report?
I'm sorry?
With the arborist report and proposed mitigation, if any.
So we don't know? You know, an arborist has to say whether there's significant wind throw risk or not, right?
Correct.
Then the city says, well, you can't cut the tree or you have to mitigate this to minimize the risk, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that's where the hearing examiner starts. The other thing is that any hearing examiner, it's chosen by the city, right? He's paid by, he or she is paid by the city, right?
Correct.
There's an economic incentive to do what the city wants for the hearing examiner when something's proposed to him. I'm saying, you don't keep your job if you anger your client for any length of time.
Well, I, maybe you should talk to our current hearing examiner.
No, I don't think he'll agree with me. I'm not saying it to-
He's supposed to be a fair, impartial jury.
As a reality, people tend to do what their employers and their clients want them to do. And so if your examiner's hired by the city, you're not necessarily going to get a purely independent evaluation. So I'm not sure that's going to be a really helpful recourse. The other thing is when somebody has to, when you- The other thing is, when somebody has to, when you create this administrative process, your next step is to go to the hearing examiner. You can't go to civil court to challenge a law until you've done that. You've got to exhaust your administrative remedies whenever you're a citizen and you want to challenge a city law. So that could add yet another layer of time and expense to the person who's trying to get the tree removed. All right. You bet, because I know I'm sucking a lot of oxygen out of the room.
Just one little clarification. I believe the current tree removal process, if there's a permit and it's denied, would go through the same process, right? The hearing examiner, they could challenge it to a hearing examiner?
The clearing permit, I think if they had to get a clearing permit, a clearing permit itself, I think it's like a building permit, and that it would go to the hearing examiner.
Yeah.
The tree removal request, as it currently sits on single-family lots, doesn't always require a clearing permit.
Correct. But if it did, right. Understood. But I mean, when you're trying to remove more trees than is currently, you know, then you have to get the permit, and if the permit was denied, you'd have that, yeah. So all I'm saying is that adding the wind throw piece doesn't change the process. It just adds another type of protection under the tree removal regs, right? I mean, that's how I understand it. It's like, if you're trying to remove trees in a critical area, if you're trying to remove trees that are, I think there was a, you know, on steep slopes, I mean, anything like that. I mean, this is just another type of protected tree, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Mike.
I just wanted to clarify. That's not what I understood from the last meeting. I felt that the appeal language was new language.
The appeal language is new language specifically directed to tree removal on single-family lots as a result of the wind throw issue. I think that in general, a clearing permit, like a building permit, the appeal process, which is in, I think, a totally different place, is to the hearing examiner. And I don't know if you can help with that.
Well, we've never had one appealed, but my understanding is that it goes to the hearing examiner.
Okay.
So one of the questions I had in my memo that the staff responded to was, and it kind of relates to this hazard tree issue. Hazard tree law says you can remove a tree without a permit. Wind throw law may require somebody to keep a tree because of the wind throw risk. And the answer from staff to that question was, there's no conflict between these laws because if a tree is dying, it may be removed. So even if the removal creates wind throw risk to the neighbor, you can remove the hazard tree.
If it's a hazard tree.
So one of my other points in my memo to which the staff responded was, the scenario I described where somebody could exploit this wind throw tree law. Somebody who maybe decades ago bought a parcel, a wooded parcel, his or her parcel surrounded, of course, by other wooded parcels. Kenmore's a forest, Kenmore's been a forest, started as a forest, so virtually every parcel at some point was cut. So this is early. And they've cut their parcel, they've built their house, they've created a lawn, and next door is a wooded parcel, and somebody owns that parcel, and decades later, somebody will call it parcel B, decides, I'm going to build on my parcel. But with this wind throw law, the first person, parcel A, who's got the house and the yard, says, I don't want them to build that house. I've got a green belt, they like it, it's quiet, the trees are lovely. I'm going to call a lawyer. He calls a lawyer. Says, how can I keep the neighbor from building that lot? And the lawyer says, well, there's this wind throw law. If you've got a tree on your property that might be affected, that might be vulnerable to wind throw because they cut their trees, the city might keep them from building on it. And so he calls the arborist. He says, I want you to tell me and plant the trees that will keep my neighbor from building on this lot. I want trees that are vulnerable to wind throw. And if you did that, is it possible that neighbor B, who only wants to do what neighbor A did, build a house, build a yard, got some trees, is stuck, can't build the house, loses the value of his property, hundreds, thousands of dollars, house never gets built, people never get to live there? And the staff's answer was, one, this scenario seems unlikely, to which my response is, yeah, but even if it's possible, doesn't that disturb you, that somebody is prevented from building on their lot because of this law? Let me finish. And then the other item was, the owner of lot B may need to do a wind throw analysis to develop, but the new small trees on the perimeter of lot A would not carry the risk factors for wind throw. But why are you assuming only small trees would be built? If somebody really wants to exploit this law, they'd have an arborist plant big trees that are vulnerable to wind throw. Isn't that right?
I suppose, Doug, that they could plant 40-foot trees, but if you're looking at a 100-foot tree on the lot that you're talking about, again, it wouldn't be a wind throw issue. I can't imagine it would be a wind throw issue.
You lost me there. If somebody planted tall trees on their lot that would be vulnerable to wind throw?
Trees that are vulnerable to wind throw are trees that are generally above the canopy of the existing, you're suddenly moving them above the canopy of the existing forest?
Yeah.
So unless the person were planting trees that were gigantic, I don't see how that would be an issue. Because you'd be looking at a tall tree, and then a little tree down here, and the removal of this tree doesn't suddenly make this tree the tallest tree in the forest.
I see where you're coming from. But trees are different heights. Different trees are different heights.
Right. You know, we could --
Trees get cut, and then trees regrow. Lot owner B may have cut his trees at some point, may have harvested the lot.
Yeah.
Trees may not be as tall as the trees that neighbor A could buy.
You understand that the city does not prevent someone from building on their lot. That would be a taking, and that's not something we would do.
That's what I'm getting at.
So I think that the scenario itself is an extreme example of what could possibly maybe happen, but we would not put someone in that position either. It would, either, I just can't imagine the scenario. We'd have to have an arborist in to look at the issue, et cetera.
This is what you were getting at, right, Mike? That these are exempt, this is what came as news to me in your most recent memo, you're saying that a building permit is exempt from the wind throw?
No, a building permit goes through the Chapter 18 rules related to wind throw.
Where they have to have a tree protection plan.
Correct. So they would have a tree protection plan, they would have a certain number of tree credits that they were supposed to be retaining, they would look at the wind throw issue and see if, in fact, it was going to create a wind throw problem either on their own lot or on four trees within 50 feet of the property line, as it's currently written on. I know there was some discussion about that.
Right.
And then the permit would be approved after review of the tree plan and preparation of information from the arborist.
So that means, I think, it sounds like the scenario could happen. If you, if wind throw applies to building on a lot that has trees, they've got to prevent wind throw, wind throw from hitting their neighbors.
For neighbors.
So why is that so unlikely?
Well, you were talking about planting trees on a lot to prevent that. And I just think it's an unlikely scenario.
Unlikely that somebody would go to that length to have a free green belt?
Yeah.
Oh, well, I could tell you, I've been practicing real estate law for over 20 years. I've seen neighbors to be way more aggressive to their neighbors than that.
Well, I won't dispute it with you. That's your perspective, and the commission may agree with you on that point.
Okay. I got real serious reservations, because that's worse than a taking. In other words, with eminent domain, which I know sets off alarms around City Hall when people say those words, there's a lot of resistance to it. But the law of eminent domain says that if the government takes private property for public use, they at least have to provide just compensation to the owner of the private property. So at least they get their value out of the property. They don't get to use it anymore, but at least they get paid for it. With this kind of a law, somebody might own a perfectly buildable lot, the trees on it, not be able to build on it, lose the value of the lot, and they get zero from the government. That's worse than eminent domain. So my concern stands. Go ahead. Oh, Deborah.
Sorry, I thought I heard staff say that they wouldn't engage in takings. In other words, they would not be preventing somebody from removal of trees for the purpose of building. But there are mitigation methods. So I, I mean, maybe I misunderstood, but I thought that's what I heard.
Yes.
So.
Where is it? If we've got a tree protection plan law that has a wind throw component, where is it okay, then, to create wind throw?
It's, again, I'll say this, and then you can have your discussion. The idea is that the wind throw threat is assessed for significant trees. So first, the trees have to be significant, then they have to propose, or they have to constitute a significant threat, which is something that is determined by an arborist looking at the trees on the property and the trees on the adjoining property. If there is a significant threat, then mitigation measures are considered. Could something be relocated? Could a well or a retaining wall instead of the cutting of a tree occur? Could there be trenching or boring rather than trenching of utilities? So it's looking at, and the arborist is supposed to provide, alternative mitigation measures that might address the problem.
Okay. I think I'm getting it. I appreciate it. Here's something I brought in my memo that seems applicable, then. If we could have language in this ordinance that says the city will require the least intrusive measure for satisfying reduction in wind throw risk. And I think that's consistent with the substantive due process requirements, that a goal, a government goal, has to be satisfied by the least intrusive measures to reach that goal. So until we have things in this statute, we have language in this statute that gives legal leverage and protection to the owner of a property trying to reasonably use his or her land, I'm not going to be comfortable with it, but I think that's what your goal is. And if so, maybe we can get there with some change in the language. I don't know who was first. I'm going to go with Carol.
Well, I think one thing that we need to back up and remember is, just doing some research about urban forestry, I discovered that, you know, King County already has some goals set in their plan. And as a city, we are trying to meet the goals of King County that are already in existence by bringing our ordinances current. So we've worked on them a little bit in 2004, and I think you said in 2007. And as a growing city, looking at density issues and looking at the fact that we are an urban corridor, travel-wise, we have an obligation as a city to make provisions for this, for our citizenry, protecting them and their public safety issues. But we also have an obligation to the county to preserve our urban forest. And that is part of the balancing that we haven't really talked about, that I think these ordinances are trying to accomplish. And I don't want to muddy the waters in talking about all of that, but when I went back and actually read all of that stuff that's in the King County code, and really thought about some of the issues we've talked about, I realized that what we're trying to preserve when we're preserving trees is to actually preserve an asset value for the city. We don't want to just mow all the trees down and have, you know, canyons of buildings, which probably wouldn't happen here. But the only way the city can really accomplish those goals is to set up some way to manage that asset. Now, when you're issuing a building permit or a grading permit, it's a little easier to assess that and seeing if there's a wind throw, because we're not talking about a lot of the other issues surrounding an urban forest. We're just talking about wind throw issues. But if you try to come out a little ways and realize that the wind throw issue is just a little piece of this, that we're trying to move forward in this whole topic of urban forestry, then it gets a little less tense. But also, it is helpful, because we've heard the staff be able to describe what the goals are in a way that reassures a property owner, that there are procedures that allow them to approach the city and accomplish their goal. So I think the goals are pretty clear, but it's the language that's being used that is the problem. I don't think the city of Kenmore, especially moving forward, let's move forward 20 years, not just today, when we have still big properties that are getting developed that have these trees on them. But let's move forward. I mean, I've lived in my neighborhood, which basically they mowed down all the trees 30 years ago and built it. But here it is 30 years later, and we have huge trees in our properties, and we're going to have to start thinning them out, removing them, you know, doing whatever. And it is good to have some kind of protections that address a real issue. I think it's very amazing that we had this huge windstorm to let us look at that potential danger, because if we'd had 10 years of just nothing happening, we probably would just say, yeah, make these rules. But we want to address all of the dangers that we can at this juncture. Does it mean this is the only time we're ever going to look at this? Probably not. But for now, looking at these ordinances or passing these recommendations up to the city council, you know they're going to have a similar discussion as we are. They're not just going to rubber stamp what we recommend to them. They're going to have, you know, public input. And as a commission, I think we're doing a good job of thinking about some of those issues, bringing them forward to staff, letting staff wrestle with the language, and coming back to us with potential adjustments. But we don't want to make it over burdensome and not come up with any wind throw ordinances either. So, you know, if our goal is to preserve our urban forestry in a way that still protects private property rights and developers, so they can come in and do some development, it seems prudent to work out the kinks and pass the recommendations up to the city council and let them also work on this issue.
Thanks, Carol. Angela, you've been very patient.
Well, I just wondered if the proposed language does imply the least invasive mitigation risk. For example, let's say someone wants to remove a tree that's part of a grove, maybe the mitigation would be to remove three trees versus one. Do you know what I mean? That might then eliminate the risk of that, the wind throw, which might not be defined as least invasive. So I actually feel comfortable with the city staff's recommendations. I think that, I think it makes sense. I agree with Carol that we should move forward, or at least at this time, take a vote on it if we need to.
Well, I'd like to explore it further. That's all right, Mike?
We have talked about balance repeatedly here, and I think that is, in my opinion, at least it's in the center of the whole discussion. And I think the proposal in front of us is actually intent is to create balance. We have a situation right now where we are out of balance. We have protections for single-family homeowners that would not allow a multifamily or larger development to move next door to the house and not take into account the same wind throw issues that we're talking about here. What we don't have is that same protection when that same action is done by a single-family owner, a homeowner, or by developer coming in to develop that single-family lot. I think that's what staff is presenting us with, is the opportunity to be able to extend that same rule and the same protection to single-family homeowners that they have in all other cases for all other type of developers. That doesn't seem to me to be overly burdensome. The protection here, I think, too, is in two ways. It's not only to the homeowner who wishes to do something in terms of developing or changing their property, but also the impact that that action would have on the homeowner next door to them. So the protection here goes both ways. And when we talk about balance, I think we need to keep that in mind. If there's a $500 charge involved here that someone has to incur in order to ensure that they're not doing damage to their -- they're not doing damage to their neighbors, which could be much more than $500, I, I think that's not, uh, that's not unusual or out of line to be expecting. So I think balance is important, and I think what we're trying to do here is to preserve that balance. I don't see the proposals that are in front of us here as being necessarily restrictive. I think what they are is protective. And what it's doing is giving us the opportunity in an orderly way to make the sorts of decisions that we need to have, both in the future to manage our urban forest, recognizing that things do change over time, and we do need to have some rules to allow that to happen. And I think staff's recommendations give us a way to at least begin that within the narrow confines of what's in front of us today, which is the wind throw issue.
Anybody else? Mark, keep them patient.
Um, just a couple, a couple things first. So we had a question, I think it came up the last meeting about, um, the question was basically, how widely used is the current tree removal permitting process? I still don't think, I've heard a really good answer to that, and it's not really addressed in your response here. Do we have any idea how frequently people get permits versus how many trees, substantial trees, are cut down? Do we have any data or even, even a ballpark estimate?
This is the perfect question for Samantha.
Samantha, thank you.
So I receive all the tree removal permit requests for individual, single-family lots, and all the inquiries, and I can, I answer two, three questions a day about trees. It's a really hot topic in the past six months, I would say, since development has really picked up, people are really concerned, as you are. The number of tree removal permit requests that I receive just for single-family individual lots is probably somewhere around five requests per week. So, and that is whether or not a permit's required. So they will fill out the form, and then we would do a preliminary review just to see if a permit's required, which is a good way for us to track how many they're taking out per year, so that it's not one now, later, and then throughout the year. And if there's not a permit required, we don't charge for that review.
Okay, that's actually more than I, than I thought there, there might be. So are you confident that if these new regulations were to go into effect, they would actually be effective? That it, that the, the wind throw risk, that there would be enough people who actually follow the regulations, there would be enough, um, they would be effective, because people would actually be, you know, pursuing their permits?
Yes. I think so. It would be part of the review that we do. So it's something that, by looking at their site plan or answering the matrix, if it's part of the review and it's, if it were incomplete, we would require that they complete it before we continued with any approval.
Okay, thanks. The second thing I was curious about, and maybe it's a little more of a concern, I think that the neighbor notification piece, I think it's, I think it's very well-intentioned, but I think it also has the potential to perhaps sow some conflicts. There is the appeal process for the, the homeowner, but I didn't hear that there's any sort of appeal process for the neighbor who might be affected. And I guess, you know, we're talking about, I think it's been mentioned, some, some very sensitive topics about private properties and views and money and property values, and I'm not sure all neighbors are gonna see eye to eye and come to, you know, a meeting of the minds. Is there, is there anything that we could do to make that process perhaps less fraught for conflict? I know you don't want to get in the middle of civil disputes, and I, I certainly get that, but I'm, I'm concerned that this creates the potential for people to, to not get along.
I think it probably could create the potential for people not to get along. I could definitely see that. I think the idea was that hopefully the person who's assessing the risk and possible mitigations is a professional, who is an arborist, who knows trees and, and can adequately determine whether this is a real threat or not a threat. So the goal was that the decision the city would make would be based on more of a scientific review.
Right.
And, but, but the interest was in allowing the single-family homeowner who may want to talk about the balancing test, to give that person an opportunity to appeal. The neighbor, I think staff was recommending against having the neighbor have the opportunity to appeal, because their interest might be something different. It might be green belt preservation or something, and not based on the scientific part of it. Uh, that we didn't feel that it would be appropriate to allow the neighbor to hold the property owner hostage, um, over the question.
And you didn't feel like, I think you, you didn't feel that the shared burden that I think Doug raised in his memo was, was a viable?
I, I think to require, if somebody has to do a tree wind throw analysis because they choose to remove a tree, mind you, this is not a hazard tree, this is a perfectly healthy tree that they wish to remove for whatever reason, it did not seem appropriate to ask the neighbor, because the property owner wants to remove the tree, to help pay for the analysis. I guess we didn't think that was fair.
Okay. Can I? Go ahead.
Well, I just had one more separate point, if you want to go to that one.
Can I, can I jump in right there? Because I had a response to that very point. Because this was addressed, I brought it up in a memo, staff addressed it, said it's not fair to impose this cost on the neighbor. If person A is gonna cut his tree, creates wind throw risk, why should person B have to pay any share of that? The thing that was left out of the staff response is that the cost sharing would, would arise if the person A, tree cutter, was using his property in a reasonable way. And the point of sharing the cost is that name, person A is only doing what person B already had the right to do. For example, if person A wants to build a house on his tree-filled lot, just as person B had already done, and person A was doing something just as reasonable as what person B had already done, and for that reason he was gonna cut a tree, yes, it would create wind throw risk to person B, but person B had already done that same thing, and it's a reasonable use of person A's property, I don't think it's fair to impose the full cost of that on person A. Both parties are getting the benefit from that.
I think we disagree.
Well, we do disagree, but that's my point, and that's my response to what you're saying, is that there, there's a fairness factor, a burden factor, on the person who wants to cut the tree, because they're using their property in a reasonable way, and that wasn't mentioned in the staff response. Go ahead, Mark.
Well, just my final point was, I just wanted to, I appreciate what Carol said about this being, you know, a smaller part of a, a much broader issue. And, and to me, this, you know, what we heard from the public comments and, you know, from our discussion, that I think it sort of heightens the urgency of addressing it more globally. Um, you know, I know we have this before us, but I, I think there's a, a little bit of an aspect of, of the cart before the, the horse. And I'm not exactly sure how to approach that yet, but I, I really think there's, there's even more urgency to address the, the urban forestry more, more broadly, so.
Thanks, Mark. Uh, I was gonna jump in, and then I'll go to Deborah, did you also have your hand up?
Mike did too.
I know, I know, I just want to get in line. So I'm gonna go with you after me, and then I'll go with Mike. Is that okay? Are we good here? So, one thing I wanted to get kind of back to responding to the staff's response, I said that the word significant was taken out of one of the staff memos. Originally, the staff said, hey, wind throw rules only apply if an arborist says that removal of a tree would create a significant risk of wind throw. I saw a memo that where that word was removed, and the staff said, we don't know what Mr. Nugent's talking about here. And I'm looking at staff memo from July 20th, I'm sorry, July 15th, page four. The language in the proposed language in the statute would say, and this is under five, 15.25.070B subsection 2B, removal of significant trees on lots, and these are exemptions to the permit requirement. Removal of significant trees on lots that contain existing single-family detached dwellings and that, subsection B, would not increase the likelihood of tree wind throw. And in the previous iterations, I had seen the word significant. So between the words not increased, I think should be the word significant. That's what I was getting at. But it's, you know, I'm not gonna fight over it. The staff says, okay, we'll put significant back in. That's good. My problem with significant is it's so vague. So the ci- city could, and this is my problem with the statute at large, we don't have least intrusive measures in the language. Vice Chair Kugler says, well, it's implied. You're taking a roll of the dice as to whether a hearing examiner or the city would interpret it the same way. Why don't we just make it explicit?
I just wanted to clarify, I wasn't saying it's implied, I'm saying that it, it couldn't, you know, taking down several trees may not be defined as least intrusive, it's actually more intrusive, you know?
Right. Um, but do you see my point?
I understand what you mean, further clarification.
Right. If we tighten up the language in this, I think it, there's much more chance it would be implied. People talk about balance, oh, there's balance, and Lori says, oh, well, we would take all that into account. But if, unless it's in the law, we can't assume that. And I want this law to be specific. A lot of people said, this is a really emotional issue. People on both sides have feelings on tenderhooks, and they're angry. I want to build a house on my land, just like you did on yours. Well, I don't want you to have a tree that's hanging over my head. And that's why I think, in terms of public safety, which is something we all agree on, why don't we expand the hazard tree law? And let the neighbor enforce that law, not just the homeowner, when the homeowner sees to it. I think that's what'll get us a lot more mileage than working with this much more convoluted wind throw rule, which has burdens on, could have burdens on either side, and are very fa- fact-specific. And we have this law of negligence, which I mentioned in my memo. It's a law that's been developed by judges over hundreds of years. We inherited it from England, for goodness sakes. And it really should be called the law of neighbor, the law of neighborliness, because nuisance is kind of a funny word for it. But if you, I've cited some cases, I could read from the cases, and the judges in those cases say, there's not a simple rule that applies here. It really depends on each case. What are the facts and circumstances of each case? Is the landowner who's creating what the neighbor thinks is a problem, using his or her land in a reasonable way? That's step one. And most of the time, if it's a reasonable use of the land, I'm sorry, neighbor, but that's part of living in, next to somebody. You know, if it's reasonable, it's something you could do too, you gotta live with it. If it's unreasonable and it's imposing an unreasonable burden on the neighbor, then put a stop to it. But my point is, it's a very fact-specific, very flexible law for a reason, and it has been for hundreds of years. We're creating a, you lose, you create wind throw, you lose. It doesn't matter why you want to cut that tree. Well, it should matter why you want to cut that tree. And I know, Lori, you've said, oh, we'll take that into account. Well, let's put that into the law and make it specific. I'm sorry, explicit. We've got the word mitigation being used, but the bottom line in the law is minimize. That worries me. As I said, the word minimize means, there's no better way to cut down than to prevent wind throw than to leave the tree. So whether it's the city or a hearing examiner, it opens the door for saying, you can't touch the tree. Sorry, you own the property, you own the tree, we're gonna control it. That's contrary to the basic principles of freedom of choice and private property rights, which is more important in this country than most. And finally, um, this, getting back to public safety. I'm not sure this wind throw law, especially after this windstorm, I'm not sure how effective it is. We had a, in the most recent memo, the staff said, well, look, these are all these other cities nearby that are, already have some version of a wind throw law. We haven't seen those law, they did link to those statutes, but I already had a lot of reading to do, so I couldn't read them all, but we had this windstorm on August 29th. And we got beat up pretty good.
Yeah.
Here's the thing, so did everybody around us, and they had these wind throw laws. Do we have any evidence to show that the wind throw laws did any good? Most of the trees that caused problems were big trees near power lines, they were falling on the power lines, and it wasn't one neighbor versus another neighbor. The really risky trees are the ones lining public roads and right-of-ways, and they're really tall. And if you just drive down Juanita, or a lot of other places in this city, you'll see trees at least 50 feet tall. There are no blocking trees next to them, they're standing alone. And they're so, they're so, their branches are actually entwined with the power lines. That's a lot riskier than this wind throw law, and that's probably why these other jurisdictions who had wind throw laws didn't do any better in the windstorm than we did. Can't we focus instead on, A, a hazard tree law, to help people like the ones who are here tonight? And B, instead of, you know, all these regulations and arborist reports and mitigation and what are the options, and maybe there's a hearing examiner, and everybody's gone broke by the time the smoke is cleared, maybe we could have laws that say, you gotta keep trees near the public roadways below the power lines, or we gotta bury the power lines, or we gotta do something about those, those trees. They're beautiful trees, but they're the riskiest ones in the city. So if our focus is on public safety, why aren't we looking at that, instead of this, hey, there's a wind throw law, we oughta, we oughta adopt it, regardless of the burden it imposes on people who own houses, property? I don't think we're ready for this.
I can say that, uh, after doing the research, a lot of the cities that recently adopted these are fairly new within the last two to four years. And the, the increase to, or kind of the push for this right now is not, it won't have immediate effect. It might take five to 10 years to see the full effect as a lot of long-term planning things are in place. The concern is over the rapid development in the region, and all this development occurring where we might see that in five to 10 years, should nothing be done now, or in the near future? All these risks that people came and presented tonight, somebody cut these trees, and now I'm afraid these remaining trees are gonna fall. If we don't put these preventative measures in place, we, there might be an insurgent of that in the next five to 10 years. And so, yes, a windstorm like we got, this law, it's not instantaneous, we're not gonna immediately implement wind throw law, and all these trees are gonna be saved. It's the concern over the rapid development, the regions facing, people clear-cutting and not really looking at the unintended consequences of just clearing a whole lot. And that's, that's the push for this. It's, and that's, you know, what the science says, and it's what other cities have noticed is going on, and it's kind of like trying to get in front of it before it gets worse. And if these laws were to go in place, all the people that came and presented tonight, you could prevent such a thing from increasing and happening over the next so many years. And as Carol had mentioned, we need to think not maybe about the immediate, but five, 10, 20 years down the road. What do you want your city to look like?
There's an easier way. Just change the hazard law. Change it tomorrow. And you don't have to go through all this, and you don't have to do all that waiting, and you don't have to hope. So if we really want to increase public safety, it's about the hazard tree law, which speaks for itself, and it's about trees along public roadways and power lines.
No.
So, uh, with respect to significant, you know, I said it's a vague word.
We don't want to.
And I had said in my memo, can't we come up with a more specific threshold before somebody cannot touch their tree, instead of just saying, oh, it's significant, which is really vague and debatable? And the staff response is, oh, well, the science doesn't support that. The science doesn't support fixing the law at a certain wind speed or something like that. And I've looked at some of the materials, and I have to ask, well, if the science doesn't support knowing when wind throw risk is significant, what, knowing, setting a threshold for either wind speed or certain conditions before the law kicks in, how do we even know it's significant? In other words, you're saying, hey, the law doesn't kick in till the thing is significant. But if you want to set a more specific standard, we don't have the science to do it. Well, if you have the science to know when it's significant, you should have the science to know, where do we reach a point where it's gonna be a risk of greater, either, the probability is greater than not that the tree is gonna fall if the wind hits a certain speed?
So the wind speed thing, the science was not supporting that. Uh, the matrix that we've been developing, and we've been looking at different arborist materials, they, the notion of this matrix is that there are certain things that increase susceptibility, and then, in fact, there are whole computer programs that will do this. But then it evaluates for this particular idea, is it a low, medium, moderate, or high risk? So you can wait whether the risk is low, et cetera. So the idea is that there are certain factors that can be weighted and evaluated to determine whether the risk is significant. And then it's a measure, it's a matter of deciding where in that matrix significant should fall, but that could be a numerical.
Great.
Answer.
Okay. That's what I'm looking for, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I'm gonna say one more thing, and I know Mike and Deborah have been grinding their teeth. One more thing about public safety, 'cause I, again, it goes back to the windstorm. Gee, those cities didn't do so well either. If you've got a cluster of trees on two lots, and if somebody wants to remove some of their trees, let's say there's a cluster of trees on one lot, I'm sorry, and another lot's been built out. So the cluster owner wants to cut some trees, build his house. And the city says, "No, if you do that, you create wind throw for the built-out house next door." So he has to keep his trees to protect the trees on the neighbor's side. The wind's still gonna hit some trees. It's gonna be, instead of the neighbor, it's gonna be the guy who wants to cut his trees and be like the neighbor. So if it's hitting the outer edge of perimeter trees on one lot, where's the net safety benefit from the wind throw law? Trees are still gonna fall.
So what you're saying is that if wind hits the grove, that regardless of what, any wind throw law, that some trees are gonna fall? I, I don't think we would dispute that. I mean, if the wind is hard enough, trees are gonna fall regardless of
Right.
our wind throw strategy. But we are saying that we can work, at least in cases where it's possible, to try to minimize that.
Well, this is why I think a hazard law, tree law, is a lot more effective than a wind throw tree law. Because if we've got no net tree benefit, no net safety benefit from a wind throw law, that may explain why all these surrounding cities, and I agree it would take more time for the wind throw law to have, protect more trees that wouldn't cause wind throw, but there's still gonna be trees that fall. I'm not sure that we're gonna be doing any better with a wind throw tree law than without a wind throw tree law. Plus, the wind throw tree law imposes lots of burdens on people who want to reasonably use their property. Gets me back to, okay, let's go with hazard trees, and let's look at the corridors.
But I think the trees you're describing aren't hazard trees. If it's a healthy tree that's on a grove, that's protecting other things, they're not, they're not a hazard. They're not like defined as what a hazard tree is, 'cause they may or may not fall in the storm. It's, the hazard trees are, like we talked about earlier, focusing on damage to the property and immediate risk of danger to people or buildings.
So, and this is where I know I probably diverge from some other commissioners. If the tree is healthy, and if the owner of property wants to remove it, this is America. He owns the tree or she owns the tree. I think the presumption should be in favor of letting them decide. You know, we, we have this language in our tree protection ordinance, which speaks for itself. It says, "Hey, we like trees. Keep the trees. Don't touch the trees." And here are a lot of reasons to keep the trees. I have trees in my yard. I love trees, too. But I want to decide if I get to keep the tree, if it's healthy. And that's why I was saying, if the tree removal is a reasonable use of one's property, but it does create wind throw risk for the neighboring tree, share the cost. 'Cause they're both getting benefit from keeping the tree. One guy's saying, in fact, or, yeah, share the cost of either mitigation or tree preservation or tree removal, because if it's reasonable use of one's property, the presumption should rest in favor of that person. Now, Deb, thank you for being patient.
I'll say less than I was even planning to say, because we're taking a lot of time.
Only at 8:35.
I don't know that it would be possible to expand the concept of the hazard tree regulation, for one thing, in the way that you're talking about. Because if my neighbor wants to take down a tree that's healthy, how would I know that that's gonna create a hazard? I mean, I don't know how I, as a neighbor, would have any way to say, "Oh, I'm gonna hypothesize that they're gonna take down a tree and it'll be a hazard, and therefore I'm gonna invoke the hazard reg." I don't know how we would do that.
You wouldn't then.
Okay. So I
Wouldn't come within a hazard tree law.
So I don't know how that would work, 'cause we're talking about
That'd be a shared burden if it was a reasonable use of the person's
Right. So my second point is, and this is a question to staff, whether there can be a sentence preamble to this section of the tree reg that just says, "Decisions regarding permitting tree removal," uh, excuse me, "Decisions regarding permitting for tree removal attempt to balance the needs and desires of property owners to remove trees for reasonable property use with safety issues that might arise from that tree removal." I mean, could there be just a statement of policy that that is what you do? Because that is what you do when you consider a permit. So that's a question. And then, after that answer, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the proposal that we already made, the planning commission already decided on, and I'd like to take a vote on that. So I'll hear the answer, and then I'll make a motion.
Yes, such a preamble could be added. That is like in the tree, the tree chapter, there's a whole section on the purpose of the tree regulations. So it'd be similar
If you go there.
in intent to that.
Right. It's like, right, an intent section. Okay. So I'd like to make a motion, I don't know how to phrase it, because we already approved this, to, maybe staff can help me here? To continue the approval? I mean, I don't, we already voted on it, so.
I think that you don't need to make a motion. It would be, unless someone wanted to make a motion, to change your original recommendation. You have voted originally. It would be a motion to change that recommendation, I think.
I do not make a motion then.
Mike, did you want to speak?
Yeah, just a few words. I, I think the reason this has been so troubling for me to think about this legislation with one mind is, is the fact that it's touching on both the public safety issues, which I feel very strongly about, and then, secondly, the personal property rights issues. And one relatively small set of modifications to existing legislation that tries to do that, I'm just finding it not sufficient. I want to, of course, do everything I can in terms of public safety, but as it starts to speak to property rights issues, I don't think it goes nearly far enough to balance the interests of all of the parties. So for example, if I determine on my property, I have a hazard tree that could potentially fall and destroy my $2,000 garden shed, I can remove that with no permit required, no approval required, creating a windfall risk to my neighbor's $500,000 home if his trees are uprooted. There's no balance between my interest in protecting my garden shed versus my neighbor's interest against windfall in protecting his home. Because of the hazard tree law, that this, I do think, runs in conflict with, at least in that scenario. Maybe in the, in the more commonly thought-of way, when we talk about property rights, and as Doug has explained, if I wanted to build a $500,000 home on my property, but by clearing the necessary trees to build that home, I would create a windfall property, a windfall risk to, to the adjoining property where there's perhaps no development whatsoever. I, I've lost the ability to, to gain economically from my investment in my property, to benefit a neighbor who's made no, no economic investment in his property. So, and I'm not saying one party is right or wrong. What I'm saying is, this law doesn't do anything to balance the relative or subjective value, economic or otherwise, that we have in, in our respective properties. And again, all of that is secondary to, I think, the public safety concerns, but the fact that this law tries to cover both is unsettling to me.
Thank you, Mike. Anybody else? Go ahead, Carol.
Well, I think that the discussion that we had and the public hearing that we had, we did hear a little bit of this same dichotomy. There is a need for wind throw coverage, talk about it, and create some kind of a legitimate ordinance for the city and for our role as a city. But it doesn't really always benefit the property owner. And that, that, that feels intrusive. I think that's what we talked about the last time when we gathered. And we're still there. We, we wanna see wind throw ordinances protect people, but we also wanna give property owners the ability to remove trees if they choose to do that.
And, and I think the wind throw law actually does a little bit of this, the way it's written. But is there a way that you can be more specific in protecting the private property owner?
I, I think this is maybe a time when the commission as a whole should decide which direction they want to go. The vote has already been taken. It was four in support of the recommendation, two opposed, and one abstained. I don't know whether the commission as a whole wants to continue with crafting amendments to these regulations or not. So I've heard lots of different perspectives and different opinions, but I don't know if the, the commission's position has changed.
I'd like to make a motion to delay our decision on this issue until another meeting, until we get more information and proposed language addressing the concerns we raised tonight. Specifically, what kind of specific threshold should we set before we deem the wind throw to be unacceptable? Language about sharing the burden if a person is using his or her property in a reasonable way. Seeing the matrix that the staff has said that they will be preparing to indicate all the factors it would consider, and at what point the wind throw risk goes from minimum to moderate to severe, or whatever other language you want to use. But I'd like to see the matrix first. And that we expand or consider expanding the hazard tree law so that neighbors can enforce it, the people who are actually threatened by the tree, and create a private right of action or a basis for them to submit an enforcement demand on the city that has actual legal bearing on the city's duty, or the neighbor's duty. So that's my, that's my motion.
There, your second. I'll second that. Discussion.
Can I just add that I think the topic of the hazard tree law is outside of the scope of what we were discussing, and it's not appropriate to be discussed here. I remind folks that in our last meeting, we also not only agreed to accept the staff recommendations, we also agreed that we would make a recommendation to the city council that we broaden the scope of our discussions and ask them to put that on the docket so that we could have the time and resources to do that into the future. And I think the hazard tree question falls under that. So I would, I would not support adding that piece to, go ahead, Corwin.
Thanks, Mike. So I would say, we're talking about public safety, that's, hazard tree law is at the center of that issue. And it's inefficient and unwise for us to try and craft any kind of wind throw law without trying to bring in and consider the hazard tree law as well.
I'd like to call for the question.
I'm sorry?
I'd like to call for the question. You had a motion, it's been seconded.
Yeah, and there's discussion on the table. Anybody else?
Anybody else?
Go ahead, Carol.
Well, I think, I think it's important for us to recognize that, especially in the public hearing, there were things that were brought forward that had to do with wind throw, but the wind throw recommendations didn't include that. And it does have to do with right-of-way properties and who's involved with trimming those trees. And, I mean, we're lucky that it wasn't worse. I think the, the ability for the council to actually do this topic justice so that they can make a decision does require them to look at the other things that happened, even this last week, where, you know, concerned citizens now have a potential windfall or wind throw risk, which I'm sure the city is addressing. I, I know they are. But that should be included in this discussion.
I, I might just clarify one point, which is, the zoning code and the clearing requirements do not apply in the right-of-way. So that is a different, that is a different discussion about how the city treats trees in the right-of-way. That's just the only point I wanted to make.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, I'm gonna call a roll on this one for the vote, on the motion, unless there's any question about it. Commissioner Baker?
I decline.
Abstain? Commissioner Vanderline?
Nay.
Commissioner Kugler?
Nay.
I vote yea. Commissioner Ornschall?
Aye.
Commissioner Alper?
Yea.
And Commissioner Shrebnik?
Nay.
So it's a three to three vote. So I think that means the motion fails. So is there, Commissioner Baker, is there anything else you want to maybe tweak to make this suitable? Or would you like to just carry this discussion over with more information before we vote on it? Otherwise, the, I think, existing motion will go forward to the council. Do you want to discuss it?
Well, for the people that voted nay, why did you vote nay on it? You don't want this to go forward as Doug is recommending that it go forward?
Well, Carol, what I'm proposing is, we get more information on those, the issues that I mentioned, before we vote on the final. This doesn't mean that the existing motion dies. It just means we have more information before we make a final vote.
Okay. So, so in other words, even though we've made the recommendation
We've moved it forward to the public hearing process. We haven't voted on the recommendation to council. If we don't vote on anything, my understanding is, it goes, has already voted. Is that right?
That is correct. So as it stands, it's a three, three abstain vote with the recommendation as adopted initially by the planning commission, moving forward to the city council.
It's a three, three abstain vote, which failed, so that the previous vote would go forward to the city council? And the motion is to get more information?
Does the city council have an ability to request more information when they get these recommendations?
Yes.
So the pressure would be on me to change my mind.
You don't have to do anything. I'm just asking if there's, you know, I'm not trying, you can say, "I still abstain." You can, whatever you like. But I'm just suggesting, first, I want to clarify this, and if there's something you think is unacceptable in the motion, and it could be tweaked or something, I'm giving you the opportunity.
So your specific request is that there's more information in those three areas that you outlined?
Yeah, there might have been more than three, but
Okay.
You had a whole list.
I did have a list. I think, I think Lori got it down, though.
May I offer a comment?
If Carol cares to see the floor?
I think what we've seen here is that we clearly have either a split or at least a major minority opinion here. Where, which side the minority is, I'm not sure. But there's clearly, this is something that the city council's going to have to take up at some point. I'm wondering if this isn't the point at which we decide to, we have a motion that was voted four to two. I would suggest that perhaps if the minority folks want to present their opinion in writing, then we can move forward to a meeting with the city council and give them the opportunity to ask the question. I don't know that further discussion about this is gonna move us one way or the other. I think that's something the city council needs to hear. I think that's, that's, there's a message in that in itself.
I'd like to respond. I'd like to respond. Speaking at least for me, and I think also for others who voted yes for this motion, I'd like, this is a difficult issue. They are overlapping conflicting principles, important principles. They don't have a lot of time. They don't have the amount of time that we have to get it right. We're undecided. I think it's irresponsible for us to sit in their lap, an issue of this sensitivity and importance, undecided, with majority, minority, heck, we don't know, yes, there's more stuff that we should find out, maybe you should ask, not us, good luck with it, we're out the door. I actually think we should find out for ourselves, get it right, discuss, we've had a very thorough discussion, I know people are split, but I think it's helped a lot. There's more I'd like to know, to make the best decision and give the best product we can to the city council. Anybody want to comment, change a vote, discuss?
No, I don't want to change a vote. I think whenever we have, I mean, the job of the planning commission, and also the city council, obviously, in approving our decisions, is almost always a balance between property, regulations are almost always a balance between property rights and public good. I can think of almost none that don't require some sort of balance. So, it is our job to make decisions that involve those balance. I don't, I don't, it feels like we're shirking our duty if we just punt it to the council. So, I guess that's my feeling about that.
That sounds like an argument for getting more information and getting it right.
Okay, well, I
Well, that's how I hear it. I don't know how else you could take it.
I actually have the ability to change my mind, is that correct?
When?
Excuse me, I mean, could I
Oh, next time we meet?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so, we're, we did ask the staff to provide us additional information. Did we ever take a motion that we weren't done with this issue? I mean, can you
So, where it was left here was that the motion to provide a list of additional information as expressed by Doug failed. Staff has intended on October 6th to bring back the matrix for your review.
Okay.
But that would be the only piece of information that we brought back, assuming that today's motion failed.
Okay.
Without, yeah, if, if there's no change, that's all that's going to happen. If we want more information.
So, if I changed my mind and said, I'd like more information, that would change what would happen on October 6th, is that correct?
It would add the items that Doug had itemized in his motion to the list of information that we would bring back.
Okay, could you repeat what those are, just for my benefit?
I hope I caught them. You'll have to correct me. One was discussion about the threshold for wind throw significance, how would that be determined? How would one determine when wind throw was significant? More information on why the burden between property owners should not be shared, in other words, that the person who wants to remove the tree and the neighbor who would be affected, why they should not share the cost, for example, of the arborist report. The third thing was the matrix, which we were bringing back anyway. And then, the last thing was addressing the expanded, an expanded hazard tree law as an alternative to create a private right of action, so that a property owner could ask another property owner to remove a tree that they perceived was a hazard.
I think I asked also if we could consider language about the least intrusive measure, that the law would only require the least intrusive measure on the party that's prevented from doing, using their property reasonably.
Well, I am going to request that I could change my mind, if that is possible, and I would like to agree with this motion, so that we could seek more information in those specific areas. So, it wouldn't just be a presentation of the matrix and the questions that are asked when a person is applying to remove a tree, assessing whether it would create a wind throw, but we'd also look at those other items as well in discussion at our next meeting.
Okay. Procedurally, are we okay if we declare this a four to three vote? Or do we need to take a revote altogether?
I don't know the technical answer to that.
I'm fine, because it's pretty clear where everybody stands.
You would need to make a new motion, because we already voted, so.
I revise my motion. I think Lori has specified what it is, the additional information we're looking for. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. I'll take a roll. Commissioner Baker?
I'll say yes.
Commissioner Vanderline?
No.
Commissioner Kugler?
Nay.
Commissioner Nugent?
Aye.
Commissioner Ornschall?
Aye.
Commissioner Shrebnik?
Nay.
Motion carries four to three. All right, it's 8:57. The next item on the agenda is?
Microhousing.
Microhousing.
And, so, this is, I view this as a minor discussion. The planning commission may feel differently, so you can decide. I can, I think that, given that we're going to have another long discussion about trees next time, based on the information requested, we can approach it two ways. I can start the microhousing thing, and then we can go back to trees, and then we can go to tiny houses, or if the commission feels that it's nine o'clock and you're exhausted, we can take this tiny little piece and then put it at the front of tiny houses, probably meeting after next. It's your option. I'm happy to go ahead if you think we can move through this tonight.
So, I've, I think that the rules and procedures for the planning commission say that the meeting shall be from 7:00 to 9:30, but I've always sort of had a nine o'clock witching hour when we've done these things, and I know everybody gets tired, so I leave it up to everybody to decide whether we want to go forward, or we want to just call it a night. Call it a night. Anybody else?
I'm indifferent.
Call it a night. Call it a night. What do you think, Angela?
I don't care.
Either way. Mark?
I think so too.
Call it a night?
It's important.
Okay, we're going to, I think, call it a night. It's a pretty close call. So, we'll take this up fresh at the next meeting, and also look at the amendments. Anything else, Lori?
I just had handed out for your review this time a schedule. That will change. So, although you just have it, it's hot off the presses, it is now out of date. So, I'll take another stab at that, and we will do a revision, and hopefully include it in your next packet.
All right, thank you. Any new business? There being no new business, I hereby adjourn this meeting.